Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Reinbeck's Attorney Board of Appeals meeting for November 16, 2022. First order of business is to review and approve the meeting minutes for the last meeting, which was October 19, 2022. And I just had a chance to peruse them. I know that you had a couple of more changes. Everybody had an opportunity to review the meeting. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Okay. A hearing done, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as presented for the last meeting, which was October 19, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Carry. That was nice and easy. All right. So we have one new business. I do want to just let you know, folks, on the agenda, we have two public hearings. We have Levine or Levine? We have Levine, and we also have Aruus. The Lloyd matter was closed, and that is, we have a resolution ready for that. So that will actually be moved from the public hearings to old business, and will come at the end. So I just wanted to, not that there's movement here for that, but for the record, we're moving that to where it belongs. So the first matter is Catherine Whitman. And Catherine, you've been here before, so I think you know what to do.
Yes.
What I'd like you to do, again, is just to get up to the microphone, speak loudly, clearly, and just present the application. All we're doing right now is to see if the application is sufficient for us to accept it. And if it is, we will. And if we have some issues with it, then we'll ask you to amend it in some fashion and come back to this next month.
Okay.
But let's see what you got.
Would you want me to put my question? And just tell me where you want to go.
All right. Well, I want to start by saying that I'm applying for four variances, which are, were all granted on June 16 of 2021. And in the interim, appearing before the planning board at the end of their seven-month review, they asked for new septic plants. So after seven months, I initiated new septic plants, which took over a year to get. Because of the pandemic, all the engineers seemed to be backlogged. So then I went back to the planning boards of the septic plants, thinking it would be a quick matter to finalize. And they realized now the ZBA, all the variances that were granted had expired. So that's the reason I'm here, pursuing the same exact variances that were already approved. I can explain it again, which is...
Yeah, explain it briefly, and I think there are a couple of discrepancies, and there are distances, the amount of variances, and it may just be that from the original application, when you have made a request for a certain amount of variance, and then I know you wanted to move it over eight feet, and you said four feet, and I think there's some confusion. I don't, I can't remember.
Okay, so we took the written letter, the written, I forget what you call it when you finalize everything and write on the roof. That's what we use to do all of our measurements and setbacks. So, but you'll explain once.
Yeah.
So the front yard setback, we're requesting a variance of 94 foot seven feet. We are at 55 foot five, and 150 feet is required. So the difference is 94 foot seven. And the existing house that was there before and was demolished and is now ancient history also required most of these variances because it was preexisting non-conforming. But that may be irrelevant now. On the north side, we need a 78 foot nine and a half inch variance. We're 21 foot two and a half inches from the property line, and 100 feet is required. On the south side, we're to need a 76 foot nine variance because we're 23 foot three from the property line. And the overall square footage is, we need a 607.75 square foot variance because only 11/63 is allowed, and we're at a total of 1778.75.
So one question, so, abstracting. So this is the map that you provided. So I do agree with you that the front yard setback and the building, building coverage is the same exact stuff that was granted. And I do agree in your application materials that the north side, side yard setback, that you have it down, that your, the proposed structure would be 21 feet, two and a half feet, and then the variance requested was 78 feet 9.5 inches. But see how it's, this is the variance on the site plan, that's this 25, two and a half, which was what you had originally requested in 2021. So initially, in 2021, you wanted to move the house down eight feet, and then what the board had granted was four feet.
Okay.
So the north side, whatever granted, was 21 feet, two and a half. And then on the south side, which here you have 23, and that was what was originally requested, but was granted was 27. So that's, that, and I can, I did check on the, what were the variances granted. I can pull that up, that resolution up.
Yeah. We tried very hard to match that exactly, but there must have been a mistake in the office that...
Yeah, so that was just, so again, because the site plan kind of says, there's the two issues that I had seen, was that the site plan kind of had different measurements than what's in the application, and the variance, if, I mean, if you're asking the new variance, that four variances for this application, but I think, you know, I did also talk to Jim Levy, who's an important consultant, and he did say that the planes in front of the planning board are what was granted, having the 21 on the north side, 27 on the south side. So we just need to have...
Okay, so I think that this might seem an old drawing that, that's different than and...
Yeah, so this was, this is the variance of the 30, and I'm trying to read this. This is kind of explaining what the modification was. So side yard setback on the north side would be 21 feet, 2.5 inches. The side yard setback on the south would be 27 feet, three inches.
Okay. So the paperwork is incorrect also for the south side?
Yes. Yes. So I guess we just, just want to confirm.
Well, I wanted it to match what the planning board has.
Okay. I think, so Jim, like when I spoke to Jim, he did say that the south side says 20, the 23.
And then the north side says 20. So the planning board has the current site plan, and this one is old.
Okay.
So I have to switch it.
And then, I guess...
Sorry.
The, your, your application for the variance, say the side yard setback on the south does, does list it at 23 in your application here.
Yes, so I'll change, yeah, I'll change that. Okay. Is there any way to just override that tonight, so I don't have to wait another month?
Well, the only thing is that, you know, when we have a record, you know, when the board does the revolutions, and they have a whole record file, we want to make sure that it's consistent with what's being requested and what's being granted. So I think the fact that, you know, the, the map, the site plan map, it belongs, they, these need to be corrected, and I, and we would like to have it in writing about what the, what's outside there, and what draft we see, the 27 or the 23 that you've granted. And my recommendation to the board is just because we do have to draft the public hearing notices based on whatever the variances are requested, we do need that to be confirmed and verified before we can issue a public hearing notice.
Right. And then we've had this happen before, where there have been discrepancies, some large, some not so large, but they have to be precise. Because, you know, obviously, you're asking for a variance. I know it was going to be, because you're asking for a variance, and that's an extraordinary measure. So we're not trying to be opinionated. And I thought we have to have...
No, sorry.
We have to have precision.
Yeah.
And so I did talk to Kim about this, and it was our feeling that if you just go back, you know the corrections you have to make, resubmit it, we'll have it beyond December, and we'll go from there. And then we won't have any issues with public hearing, you know, discrepancies, things like that.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that the planning board and the committee are just looking at the same requests.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, do the board have any other questions that they wanted to...
You guys remember that?
Are there any other changes from the original?
The only change is we're showing the new septic roughly outlined in the front yard, and we have the new septic drawings as well. I don't know if you're going to want to see the septic drawings from the...
It doesn't hurt to see them, but that's kind of outside our business.
Okay.
Are you, I think I saw...
Oh, there is one other problem that came up at the planning board, sorry.
Oh, no.
The fence that was requested by the neighbor last round was put in, I mean, not put in, but we put it on the drawings to satisfy the neighbor. The neighbor has moved, sold the house, but planning board realized at the very last meeting that it just crosses the wetlands buffer. So in order to do the fence, special permit, special use permit may be required. So if that's the case, do you still require the fence even though the person has moved? The planning board said they'd like to see something there, either plantings or a fence, but I don't want to get locked into a fence that's going to trigger a lot more things if it's not needed anymore.
Well, it's, it's a pretty small space there, so I think if that was requested, agreed to, approved, we'd probably want to stay with that.
Okay. So what does that change for the application? Is it a special use permit for you, or only the planning board?
It would be for the planning board.
Okay. Do you know if you would need anything from DEC?
Because sometimes if you're, if it's a DEC webinar, they might require a permit or in the buffer.
Well, the other option, it's, it's not shown on here, but it only crosses, like, right here.
Yeah.
So maybe we could make less of, make the fence for less of the yard and then do plantings, because I don't think they have a problem with plantings.
I mean, if the new owner of the joint property doesn't require that fence, I'm just wondering if this is just a whole other problem for...
Well, I think it's more, plenty more problem than our problem.
Okay.
Because we have to make sure that the, the outline, you know, the setbacks are the same as what we granted before.
So for the next application, it's probably wise for me to just remove the fence from your work altogether, since nobody here requests it anymore.
Well, it doesn't have to, but I mean, the main thing you have to make sure is your paperwork is absolutely pristine and has the exact measurements for the variances you're requesting, and you're close, but you're not quite there.
Just whatever you submit to the planning board in terms of what the review is, whether you keep the fence for the planning board or not, I would just say you should provide that to the ZBA.
Okay.
Because, you know, the ZBA, what they're looking for is granting the variances are, you know, that five factor test, you know, benefit to you as the applicant versus detriment to the community. And if you have the fence in there, if you're going to keep the fence in there for, you know, a privacy or a buffering, that's important for the ZBA to consider. And if you, if you're not going to keep the fence, but you're going to put something else in the tree, that might be something that's more considered. So whatever you put in front of the planning board, or however your, whatever your plans are, they should match whatever's in front of you.
Yeah.
Even if the ZBA is not looking, you know, for variances on the fence, it's built kind of into what the community character is, what the substantiality is, what the impact are, the physical environment. So just, yeah, I think the important thing is that whatever plan you submit to the planning board should, should match whatever's in front of you, and vice versa.
Yeah. This was just administrative mess up because we had the right plan over to the planning board, and the old plan got into this package, so...
That's fine.
Very sorry.
Just make the change as soon as you can, just to make sure that you get it on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Which is, it's 21st, yeah, it's the 21st, so, but still, the sooner the better.
Okay. 21st of December?
Is the next meeting date.
Okay. Great, thank you.
But you have to have it by...
December 5th.
December 5th.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you, Catherine, I'll make a motion that at this time we do not accept the application, and hopefully we'll get the provisions, new application to be accepted at the next meeting.
What's your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Carry. All right, so number two.
Good evening, Warren. Good evening. Warren's Med Architects are presenting, Andy Fredo Veenier with us this evening, the five owners of 23 O'Brooke. And him has had to put up a rendering video requested at the last meeting to get an initial sense of what the proposed addition looks like. So the existing residence is everything from here to the west, and the proposed studio with garage in the lower level is proposed to the right. Obviously, these certain lots along Hook Road were developed under previous zoning, when they were compliant lots, zoning has changed once or twice since that time. So now it's an pre-existing non-conforming parcel, and the side setback is required to be 100 feet. We're proposing to go this addition to within 95, 25 feet of the property line, so it's four and a half foot. If really, we have to find, we could live a quarter. So just to give them a garage and a studio space above it on any level, and I would suggest the difference from the neighbor between 100 feet and 95 feet is probably pretty minor. But, so that is what the request is.
You may want to put up, and by the way, thank you, the renderings, I really liked, and they were excellent. Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to suggest, just for the record and for the audience to show the site plan.
No, the four renderings. Oh, the four renderings, sure.
Which were nicely done.
I just want to say too, I know you had mentioned, Warren, that the, so the lot's going to be not facing the front.
It will not face the road.
And you can see that.
The side of the house, that's right.
Here's the, you see the...
That's right. I think the original garage was actually sort of here facing the road, and then that was turned into a living space some years ago. So, that has evolved over time. But because Andy Fred owned the adjacent lot, which was originally a whole separate buildable lot, combined it at one point, there had the ability to come in on the side. And there's a significant drop off in grade from this to the adjoining lots to this out there. So it's sort of very natural to talk to the garage, and the forcing required to network the property.
No, it looks great. Is there anybody here, public, who would like to speak to this application? Anybody? It's a public hearing, so that's why, that's why I ask, but anybody want to comment? Anybody here for this? Okay. The board members, if you have questions, concerns about the application and what's being proposed?
Was it made straightforward? I know that property, so it's really in the road.
Okay. Right, hearing, any questions? I'm good. You're good? Everybody good?
It's good.
Okay. All right, then, at this, not having any public input, Warren, thank you for your, for the renderings and for your explanation. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Public hearing is closed. As you know, we have 62 days from today to render our resolution. However, it will be done on the complement by the next meeting, which is December 21st. So thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Yeah. And as far as doing a site visit, should we talk both for you?
Yes, it's actually been safe.
Okay.
And you can let me know when you want to stop by, and I'll just convey that to...
Okay. No, probably weekends are usually better.
Right.
But that's okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
Great.
And we get the referral from the planning board, and they pass the old specific kinds of environmental concerns. Question, anything from WAC or, oh, I don't know. My guess is 30 days will have a lap certainly by the...
Yeah, so by the time the resolution is read, yeah, absolutely. And Richard, this is yours, I think?
Yes.
Great. All right. And so the next guy that is on is, this is a continuation of your public hearing. And anybody here on Aruus?
No. Did you know the right address?
What's that?
There was another right, where we had...
No.
Oh, that's, that's actually on old business. It was, it's not a public hearing.
Okay. I just, the dean, he was...
I'm sorry.
So we are...
I want the site plan map.
Right. So there's actually a new one that I'm gonna edit today that I emailed to you.
Oh, I don't think I got that.
I just emailed it probably an hour ago.
Oh, that's probably...
And so it's, it's based on some discussion that Mr. Aruus has had with Mr. Lagno about...
Let me just pull it up. I'm just, you can keep talking, Mark, I'm just gonna pull up my emails.
Hey, Mark, I've heard some stuff a lot about some agreement of some sort, or understanding between the neighbors, and has that been reduced to writing, or is it just a, what's the...
You know, I missed that.
No, it was my understanding, I'd kind of heard it through, I don't know, somewhere, that the neighbors had spoken, which I commend you guys for speaking, and had come up with some kind of agreement or understanding or something. I could be wrong, but yes.
Actually, Mark, do you have, should you, I, it's not in my, it's not in my...
I also sent it to our manager in the lobby.
So it was just my understanding that you...
Should I speak?
You can speak, well...
I mean, fuck your call, Dean.
Okay. We'll wait till the dean gets here, but you guys can tell us what...
Oh.
Yeah.
About working against this setup, do you want to move to Lloyd, while we're...
Yeah, I guess we can do Lloyd, because we have some time. Can I address your last comment?
Yes. Wayne, Wayne Thompson, attorney for Doug Lagno here. Up until about 4 o'clock this afternoon, I fully expected to be here with a memorandum of agreement between the parties that would have satisfied the ZBA and, and planning board moving forward, because it's just going to go from here to the planning board. Unfortunately, and for whatever reason, the attorney for Mr. Aruus never got in contact with me or him, and while we have an agreement in substance, we don't have, I've reduced it to writing, we don't have an executed agreement. So at this time, absent his attorney contacting me this evening and finalizing, because he said there was a few minor edits that we needed to make, we don't have a final agreement. So absent that agreement, Mr. Lagno would prefer that the meeting be held open until we finalize that, spend some time, they might walk the property together. But this is something that absolutely needs to be reduced to writing, to be part of the, become part of the record and decision for here and for the planning board as well. If we get that done, then it's over with for, as far as Mr. Lagno is concerned. But we really absolutely have to have it reduced to writing, you know, and executed before we're ready to let go of this, this issue. And thank you very much.
No, 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 but thank you for the explanation, and we can talk about it more, but I think since we waited for Mr. Aruus, maybe we will...
Five minutes, you said it'll be there in five minutes.
Five minutes. We can leave Prague ahead, if you don't mind, just to get the resolution done on Lloyd Mac. That's okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll move, leave Prague, ask Aruus to Lloyd. That's okay. You ready?
Sure. Resolution of the Town of Reinbeck's Attorney Board of Appeals in the matter of the area variance application Alexander Lloyd, ZBA page number 1034. Background: The applicant is Alexander Lloyd. He is the owner of the property, was represented by Andrea Steele, AIA. Andrea Steele, property involved. This appeal involves property located on North Road, making, which is vacant land, in the town of Reinbeck, in which bears the tax parcel ID 135089606900535040. The applicant's property is 5.27 acres in area and is located in the HP 20 zone district. A description of the proposed project. The applicant seeks to construct a new four-bedroomed single-family residence with attached garage, 6,386 square feet for principal structure, plus an additional 534.37 square feet for garage. A new detached accessory structure to be used as an art studio, 981 square feet, new driveway, and new septic system. The art studio accessory structure will be located closer to the Frontiers Street than the principal structure. Based on the Town of Reinbeck's only law, three area variances are required. Number one, variance for the side yard setback for the principal structure towards the east side of property, of the property. Required setback in the HP 20 district is 150 feet. The proposed structure will be located 62.58 feet from the property line, therefore the variance required, requested is 87.42 feet. Second variance, in section 125273, except for agricultural structures, guest cottages, repairtrakers dwellings, no accessory structure shall either project closer to the frontiers street than the principal building on the lot, or be located within required front yard. The principal, the art studio accessory structure will be located closer to the frontiers street than the principal structure. Required setback of the accessory structure is 234 feet, three inches. Based on the location of the principal structure, the proposed accessory structure would be 135 feet, four inches from the frontiers street, therefore the variance requested is 98.9 feet. The third variance, from section 125273, except for agricultural structures, guest cottages, repairtrakers dwellings, no accessory structure shall either project closer to the frontiers street than the principal building on the lot, or be located within a required front yard. The art studio accessory structure is located within the required front yard setback. The required setback in the HP 20 district is 200 feet. The proposed accessory dwelling is 135 feet from the frontiers street, therefore the variance requested is 64.6 feet. therefore, the variance requested is sixty-four point six feet. ZBA review: Timeliness of appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with this board on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and was paid requisite fee. The appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the ZBA's determination letter, which is being appealed, dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and thus the application is timely, as required by section one two five one two five B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application was accepted by this board on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and deemed complete. SECA: Given that this application is also before the Planning Board, the ZBA refers to the Planning Board as the lead agency to conduct SECA. The Planning Board has designated this as type two under SECA. The ZBA accepts the Planning Board's classification under SECA and no further environmental reviews required. Referrals and responses: The application was referred to the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board Waterfront Advisory Committee, as the property is located in the LWRP and the CAB as it is a development in open space, following the ZBA acceptance of the application as complete. The Planning Board responded on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. They indicated that the application raised planning concerns and asked that the ZBA give due consideration to the comments and concerns of the adjacent property owner regarding visual and/or other potential impacts on the historic property. The application is before the Planning Board for site plan review and special use permit. No responses have been received by WAC or the CAB. As thirty days have elapsed since this referral was made, the ZBA can continue with its determination on the application without having received a response from WAC or CAB. Public hearing: A public hearing on this application was duly advertised and held at Town Hall on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The public hearing was attended by Gregory J. Sacaris, Executive Director of Wulsterstein Preservation, from here on referred to as Wulsterstein, and Catherine Chorrocko, Assistant Director of Wulsterstein. They both spoke at the public hearing and expressed concern with the side yard setback, noting that any reduction to the buffers are a concern for Wulsterstein, a private historic property adjacent to the property. Mr. Sacaris and Ms. Chorrocko also noted that public trails on the Wulsterstein property go near the property line of the subject property, and also noted that Wulsterstein's use of the carriage house, also located near the subject property, may increase in the future and express concern with having the side yard setback reduced. Noting that Wulsterstein is a forever corporation, Mr. Sacaris and Ms. Chorrocko stated that they were looking to avoid any problems in the future, given the distance between the uses on Wulsterstein's property to the proposed location of the principal dwelling, but the required yard setback closest to the Wulsterstein property. Discussion was had between Mr. Sacaris and Ms. Chorrocko and the applicant regarding the potential use of trees as a buffer between the two properties, but the prospect of buffering trees did not alleviate the concerns expressed by Mr. Sacaris and Ms. Chorrocko. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing anything. Written public comment was also received from Mr. Sacaris, reiterating his concern in regards to the side yard setback. The adjacent area contains Wulsterstein's trailhead, office and carriage house. Wulsterstein is open to the public and is likely to become increasingly active in the future. Mr. Sacaris opposed the granting of the side yard setback, stating that ample space for buffering between the two properties is critical. Site visit: On October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, ZBA members Timothy Allenbrook, Scott Bergers, Richard Popashansky and Kath McClark visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood, including a visit to adjoining Wulsterstein property. They were joined by Gregory Sacaris and Catherine Chorrocko of Wulsterstein Preservation to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. No business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Balancing test: In our review of the variances sought, we have considered the benefit of the applicant if the area variances are granted as weighed against the detriment to health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood community by such grant. We determine that the variances requested should be granted because the benefits outweigh the detriment in view of the neighboring property and present no detriment to the overall health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of variances. Consideration of five factor in balancing tests: In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section one two five one two four C one of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. If the variances are granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. Morton Road is residential in nature, with the six closest lots to the north of the property of similar size, between five and nine acres. The houses on these lots are generally set back from the road in a similar manner, with trees and ungrowth used as a buffer to the road. Thus, granting the proposed variances for the siting of the principal house and accessory structure is similar in nature to the surrounding residential properties. In addition, the view from the Hudson River is in line with other houses along the waterway. The usage remains a single-family dwelling, as in and is in character with the surrounding neighborhood. It is also noted that the proposed development of the property is purposely designed with a intentionally low profile, to fit into the landscape and follow along with car, contoured rock out proppings to provide minimal visual disruption along Morton Road. The proposed building height and the dark cladding exterior of the structures is also intended to further minimize visual impact from the road or neighboring properties. We have noted Wulsterstein's comments and concerns regarding the side yard setback for the principal structure and the proximity to the public trails on the Wulsterstein property. The lot immediately adjacent to the west, which is currently owned by Wulsterstein, is a separate four point, five point, five point four five acre lot that was purchased after Wulsterstein became a historic site. There are no structures on this parcel, but there is a parking lot and public trails that are open year-round. Although the proposed house will be visible from the trailhead, the low profile and dark cladding will minimize the impact. The site visit conducted by the ZBA, which was done toward the end of the fall season around half the leaves that fallen, allowed us to see that the proposed house would be visible in winter, but minimally so with significant agitation as buffer. The house would be between one hundred and eighty and two hundred feet from the trail, depending on where you're measuring from, approximately three hundred and eleven feet away from the parking, and approximately four hundred and sixteen feet away from the carriage house. A steep slope from the trail down to the natural soil would most likely limit expansion of trails in that direction. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these and area variances? We find the answer to this question is no. There are significant physical constraints on this property. A large portion of the property is made up of steep slopes with rock out proppings, and there is a limited area that is level for the placement of a residential housing structure. In addition, there is a conservation easel held by senior Hudson, encompassing the strip of lawn, one hundred feet west of Morton Road, and areas of archeology of significance that are designated as no build areas, which further limit the level of area of this property. Given the limited area of relatively level ground, the septic field, and the septic field which had to approach slightly into the conservation easel is limited to where it can be placed and further restricts the siting of the structure. The combination of topography setbacks and location of the septic system is such that virtually any claim to the primary structure will require a variance for setbacks. It was discussed with the applicant whether it's possible to shift the building further away from the Wulsterstein property line, but the steep slopes and rock out proppings to the west limit moving the house further from the eastern bound and to lessen the amount of variance. The applicant, in effort to minimize impact on the scenic and historic future of the neighborhood, has designed a structure that is low in profile despite its footprint, so that it largely will be shielded from views from the road and nearby property by the surrounding trees and topography. As with the primary structure, the topography areas of archeological significance and conservation easel designated as no build areas dictate that any accessory structure would have to be sited closer to the planning rather than the principal structure, and thus require variance given these constraints. The requested area variance is substantial. We find the question, the answer to this question as it relates to the accessory structure is no. The accessory structure is limited as to where it can be placed, given the topography areas of archeological significance and conservation easel. Although it is located closer to the fronting street, given these constraints, it is still over a hundred and thirty-five feet away from Morton Road. The variance for the house is more substantial, and the only answer to the house is yes. However, will the topography be taken into consideration for the impact of the use from the joint property? Will the proposed variances have adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? We find the answer to this question is no. There are significant physical constraints on this property, and the applicant designed the principal and accessory structure. To take into account the natural features of the property, a large portion of the property is made up of steep slopes with rock out proppings, by focusing on the areas that are already relatively leveled, the applicant has designed the structures to keep many of the natural features intact without disturbing them. If the structures were to be altered or shifted to avoid the need for area variance, it would require more disturbances to the current environmental features of the property. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant could have designed a taller structure, which would require a smaller variance or potentially none. The studio likewise could have been designed as part of the house, thus avoiding variances for location in front of the house. Having said that, the overall topography of the site is substantial in its frames, including steep slopes, conservation easels and protected archeological areas. The design of both house and studio has been done to minimize loss of trees, minimize disturbance of the local people, and minimize the impact of use from the road and neighbors. A taller and bulkier building may require a smaller variance, but can further impact overall from the use from the road and from Wulsterstein. Minimal variance requested: In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we must also determine if these requested variances are the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find the answer to this question is yes. The designers' forefootage of the house is in line with other residences along the road. A separate art studio is oneest in size, nine hundred and seventy-one square feet, and combined with the garage is less than the fifteen hundred eighty-one square feet of cabinet depth square footage for accessory structures allowed in the HP twenty district. No variances have been required for square footage, and the overall footprint is two point eight percent of the site, where five percent is allowed. Now therefore be resolved based on all the factors described above, or the reasoning described above as follows. The ZBA hereby grants all the variances requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant now is definitely health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood community by such a grant as discussed above. The granting of these variances is expressly contingent upon the following: That the construction for all buildings conform to the plans submitted, subsequent to additional designs approved by the Planning Board, including but not limited to coloration of materials and appropriate landscape plans to help reduce potential visual impact impacts to the neighborhood. The granting of these variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck, the V and L P, as quoted deposits. Due in connection with this application, we hold compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed valid until all such fees are paid and filled by the applicant. The granting of these variances does not involve the applicant attempting to secure any other required permits and or approvals. The area variances shall be known void unless the proposed constructions commence to form within one year of this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. That was one of the better resolutions I've seen in my tenure here, which is long. It was detailed, it was thorough, it was thoughtful, and I think it was very well reasoned. I agree with the conclusions. You know, it's, the applicant did a lot to make, to minimize this, you know, regarding to the surrounding folks. One thing that I, in particular, focused in on was the fact that this is a part of the Wulsterstein, you know, original property. It's part of a piece of property that was acquired, and I understand it's part of Wulsterstein because it was a part of a piece of property, but it's not like it's right next to the house or any of that kind of stuff. And I thought, going out there, that there was limited visual impact from that little trailhead area. In fact, I would be surprised, especially in the summer, if any person going along that trailhead never even noticed the house. And anyway, I just thought that it was the correct decision based upon all of the factors, understand the concerns of the Wulsterstein folks. But this applicant, I think, has gone through an extraordinary journey to make this property or this structure as... has made the best application to possibly make it with topography, and I really don't think it's going to cause a huge impact. I think it's going to be a minimal impact on that trailhead area. That's just my own feeling of going out there. But I want to hear from the rest of the gang, because we really haven't had a chance to discuss it. So, I hope to look forward to the rest of my board members.
Well, the presentation I've been doing...
Could we, I'm sorry, can we just ask people to speak up a little bit? It's hard to hear.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I felt like the architects and engineers really got a good plan together, and they really did kind of count on, well, they really made it as unobtrusive as possible. And, yeah.
I agree with that. Great presentation. I know that area very well. It's interesting, the fact that... That that could have been a taller structure and probably not need any, any variances at all. And it would have been more intrusive, whatever. I've known that area for forty-two years, that road. And it was amazingly that no building really went in there that you can see from Morton Road. Very, very special. And for them to do what they're doing on this very limited lot, I thought it was a terrific attempt and the right way to go. And Catherine, I think you did a great job explaining that.
I know you spent a lot of time on this, and you did a great job. Very well reasoned.
Just one more thing about this, and under the, just wanted to know, with the consideration of five factors in the balancing test, and B, we say that virtually any plan for the primary structure would require a variance for setbacks. And then indeed, it says, it could have designed this taller structure would require a smaller variance or potentially none. I think, right, that a taller structure probably would not require a variance. Is that correct?
From the discussions we have with the applicant and the various meetings here, it's potentially, you might not need a variance, but there might be a reduced variance required. But I think everybody agreed that a taller structure would be seen from a roadway and would be probably seen by this trailhead.
Much more so.
Absolutely. So. Let's say you.
I'd like to see some of those buffering. But I think a couple of those.
Is that something we can add as a suggestion for the planning board?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think... I mean, there is some discussion in section two. Um, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, there is some discussion in section two saying that subject to any additional designs approved by the planning board. You can always, perhaps add, saying, you know.
We would ask or suggest that the planning board consider additional buffering.
Additional buffering on the south side?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, it, it is, you know, planning, it's not, it's kind of mentioned that part of the resolution itself to the planning board, I suppose, to incorporate it if it's just a recommendation. But I think it's the appropriate way for the planning board to be doing the site plan. Or this is in front of the planning board, right?
I think just adding a recommendation in here gives a little hope to them.
Yeah, sure.
Please consider this and see what you can do.
There is buffering on the plan, but I think, from the part of the recent, I had a game, I had less time. You know, it's difficult with the way the land slopes down, but I think we could sort of put it that way.
Yeah.
I could do that if you want, Gretchen, and then.
And just for the audience, could you just make a speech?
On the south side, right? It's really the south side.
Isn't it?
Well, we had this discussion before.
Yeah, I think if you were to pull up the property, you look at it.
Well, maybe it's the east side.
Well, it's called the east side. I thought it was the south side, but maybe it's the southeast side. We know what we're talking about.
The Wilderstein side.
The Wilderstein side.
Yeah. I will add something that I specifically, we would definitely want to have additional buffering on that side.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions, concerns? All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, some of those things.
Yes, I made a motion that we are pleased to assist.
Okay, and subject to the?
Yes, subject to the addition on further buffering on the Wilderstein side.
And I'll second that. Gretchen?
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Tim and Natalie?
Yes.
And all of us?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Thank you. Great job again.
I'll put that, I'll add that in a sentence. Should I write by you, Catherine, or just put something in?
I can make a look at it, but I'm sure that, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll get it changed.
It's not, again, it's, it's not really a condition.
Not really.
It's a recommendation that the planning board consider.
Right. Or sort of requirement, because we don't have a specific.
Nothing.
Change for you.
Right.
But thank you. That's just a discussion.
Okay, I think we have all the participants here on the Aru's matter. So Mark, why don't you start again, enter for the presentation, and then we have public here, thank you, give their input, and the partners can maybe explain a little bit more about tentative, I'd say.
And so I also sent a draft.
Did you like the draft?
No, it's not, but I think we have hard copies. So. This is just enough, and it's just a minor.
Thank you.
Change to the, to the site plan. There's also some architectural changes that I'll have Christina DeShern speak to.
Thank you.
But Doug, if you've seen this, you were.
Please be able to read through that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Mark Kaminsky, I'm representing Dean Maru, some area variance application. So since our last meeting, there has been discussion with Mr. Aru, Mr. Lagno, with this attitude of screen. That was discussed at school meeting. And so the, the plan that I just provided to the, to this board just shows a, there's an area that is located adjacent to the primary wastewater disposal area. I have it in the clouding. Right there. And right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed.
Right there, I've labeled it. That has been, an area that has been discussed and provided some screen in that area. In addition to that, I know that an application was made to this board for some changes to the architecture, for the architecture and also some renderings that were submitted to this board. So I'll let Christina DeShern speak to that.
Hi, Christina DeShern, KDA. Gretchen, we, we sent you some revised plans and rendering. Do you have those that we could pull up?
I don't know if Catherine has them. That was planning board, so I don't know if they, they'll come up as new.
Gotcha. Well, essentially, we, we took a look at the overall structure and we reduced the height from twenty-five feet to twenty-four feet, four inches. So we brought it down a little bit. And we made some changes to the floor plan and, and reduced the habitable area of the second floor from, previously it was about sixteen-hundred-and-thirty square feet, we brought it down to a thousand and ninety-two square feet. And essentially, it's like, you know, the, the ends of the structure where the roof kind of comes down are, you know, are not habitable space. It's just sort of low ceiling height. So the center section of that second floor was reduced significantly. We also eliminated the two-story lift for the car, which was going to sort of come up to the, to the second floor. That was eliminated. So we made an effort to kind of do what we can to serve the needs of the structure, but, you know, bring it down to its minimal size.
Does the footprint change?
The footprint has not changed.
Like, like the height?
The height slightly changed, and then the, the habitable area of the second floor got a little bit smaller.
Can you just go over?
We had that discussion about heights.
Yeah.
That a lot of the second floor wasn't.
Correct.
Could you just go over the numbers just briefly?
Right, so the, the height was reduced from twenty-five feet to twenty-four feet, four inches. And the habitable area of the second floor was reduced from one thousand six hundred and thirty square feet to one thousand ninety-two square feet.
Okay, thank you.
This.
Gretchen, what you just said, the barn rendering, this is what I have, that's the one that's dated, thirty percent. I think that's what I have up here.
The most current.
I just reported. It's a zoning, I'm gonna get right back.
Is that the date, the time of day?
It's October the eighth.
Yeah.
Eleven to eight.
And I think you all have hard copies of that, as well as the hard copies of the renderings that are like direct elevations of the structure.
In the first go-around, there were a little bit of the main wall on the second floor, wasn't there, so you brought it down?
We brought it down, okay.
And so is this showing, this way you show that the car was sudden going up to the floor?
That's correct.
Yep.
So the, the lighting and everything on the building is the same?
It's exactly the same, yeah. I mean, you know, we, we, yeah, these are renderings that we did have in the, the last meeting, close-ups of, you know, sort of an artistic representation of what, what this structure's gonna look like.
And there's, there's no lighting on the side that faces Doug's property, is there?
Correct. The side that faces Doug's property is blue.
That's okay. That's what, that's what I thought when, when I was trying to see how they'd be in this situation. Right. And it's, Mark, none of the, none of the structures moved, right? Was adding the, the trees behind the second?
That's correct. So that, so the structure stayed in the same location. The absorption field, that's been approved by the health department, stayed in the same location. And so the tree planting is located at the base of the absorption field in that area. And so also on, and I have a larger scale plan too, if it's not legible, but there's, from the plans that I provided, I also provided a use, a sightline from Mr. Lagno's house to, to the barn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and you can see from here, right, so it's just a sightline right here. And I also provided elevations, like the elevate, you know, the ground elevation, right, at Doug's house, also the ground elevation that's there. And it's, you know, it's approximately a forty-foot change in elevation that I.
I, I believe you, but it's just, being there, it doesn't look like.
Well, because we're looking at over a little hollow area, it was interesting.
Right, and so I just, you know, wanted to reiterate that. And then also, there's, it's approximately five hundred and fifty feet from Mr. Lagno's house to the, to the, to the back of, to that wall of the barn. So there's about five hundred and fifty feet distance. And if you recall, the majority of that, and so the idea of placing, you know, the landscaping, I think we can get into, you know, there's been some discussion between Mr. Lagno and Mr. Aru that could be discussed this evening. The idea of the placement of the, you know, the landscaping, landscaping buffer is in the area that's already been cleared. And not to, but it just seemed, it would make sense to clear any more trees to provide the landscape buffer. So it's, I, I think I can let Mr. Aru speak to that. I mean, he's had multiple discussions with Doug Lagno, so, and so that's, you know, I think, Dean, if you could, yeah, speak to that, I'm gonna go to Mike.
Yeah, why don't you go up to that other?
Hi, everyone, Dean Maru's. Yeah, so kind of following the discussions around the location of where the barn is, the site visit that you guys all came to, I think everyone was kind of pleased that it wasn't actually right on the edge, it was kind of set back a little bit, so there was maybe some more buffer than was originally anticipated. When I spoke to Mark and Christina about kind of locations, really the only obvious area is the one you see indicated there. Doug and I went to the site again on Friday and just kind of discussed kind of the size of the trees, the location of the trees. There is kind of, as Mark kind of indicated, there's kind of a narrow area, which is, you can't get too close to the absorption field because Aru's will go into it and that creates some issue. If we go any further, closer to Doug's house, we have to cut down trees to put new trees up. So we have, I think, a nice spot that we'll cover. We talked, Doug and I talked about putting up to eight trees there, between eight and ten feet tall, and we shook hands on it. It seemed like that was the agreeable solution for kind of addressing what other visual impacts this farm will have on Doug from the distance of this.
So, you know, obviously, you know, with buffering and landscape buffering, you know, it's brought to the attention of this board, but not part of this application to this board. So, you know, as you know, there's also a site plan, special permit application in front of, in front of the planning board. And so this item can be directly addressed with the planning board and, you know, included in, you know, discussions with the planning board and included in, you know, a resolution for site plan approval and stuff, a permit approval.
So I understand what you're saying, the fact that we don't have a formal written agreement at this moment does not exclude us from closing the public hearing and moving forward because this is going to be addressed at the planning board, at your planning board issue.
Yes, and that's, yes, that's what I was, the point I was trying to.
Yeah. Anything?
Sure. Wayne Thompson, attorney for Mr. Lagno. Part of the five-part balancing test, I disagreed with, with Mark a little bit on, on that. To ameliorate the impacts, the visual impacts and to noise and light to his environment is the buffer. And if you want to remain in ZBA language, a hardship is created here because his legal counsel hasn't contacted me to take care of something that's a fifteen-minute process to, to make this work. This is important, Mr. Lagno, he's given up some of his legal rights to challenge and have me prepare a legal memo why that should be built under current, current zoning issues. We've forgotten that by trying to be neighborly and saying, ultimately, let's just have some trees. But that needs to be reduced to writing. It's a very simple process. That would satisfy any of the impacts that, that this structure would have on Mr. Lagno's property. It would, it would ameliorate the impacts on the environment, and it sets the tone that this is the path now. Mr. Lagno is bound moving, moving forward, and Mr. Aru's is bound moving forward from this board to the other board. And in fact, if we get it taken care of here, then Doug is not, not even needed in, in front of the planning board, because this document carries through. So I'm just a little bit disappointed that we couldn't get it reduced in, in writing. I'm sorry that we're discussing it here this evening. I, I think this could have been easily taken care of and it's a, a simple document to, to move forward. And we'll, I, I think that it is a necessary part of, of the ZBA approval because it is noise and light attenuation for seasons by planting the evergreens there, and that, that then mitigates his, his impact with, with the, with any of the variances that move. So we'd really like to get that memorandum of agreement executed and finish this once and for all. And thank you very kindly for your, for your opinion.
Thank you. And by the way, I just want to say again, several times, we don't know we see it, but we really appreciate it, and that is that the neighbors have taught us and have come to some sort of agreement. It's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be reduced to writing and signing and everything else, but the fact that you two are talking to each other friendly and there's a.
Well, this is not adversarial in any way.
Yeah, exactly, and which is lovely. We don't know we see that, and, and I really want to commit to all sides of this. So it is, it's a consideration of our security, but the planning board will make the ultimate, I think, determination on, and probably based largely on the agreement between departments. So I, I don't want to hold up, you know, like him, I like to get your, your hearing, but I would, I'd like to be able to close the public hearing because it sounds like you guys are very close to an agreement. There's, there's not huge differences between the.
I, I don't know what the differences are, because I've, I've not heard from his, his counsel. And it's like, I mean, he did say there was a couple of edits that need to be made, and that's all that I know.
Is he, maybe he can?
Yeah, so I got the memorandum from them on Monday. I spoke to my original real estate lawyer. She doesn't work with zoning board stuff, so I had to find another lawyer, which I did on Tuesday or late Monday. I sent them the comments and she wasn't able to get, get it back to me. I think what Doug and I shook hands on on Friday, the kind of material components of that was up to eight trees, eight, ten feet tall. That's really what we talked about. There were some other pieces where Doug was asking if he could, if you wanted to pay for the difference for a taller tree, would I be okay with that? I said, that's fine. If Doug wanted to have more trees, I think in the memorandum he said, you'll pay for the trees, but I have to pay for the planting. I have a discipline on that. If you want more trees, you should pay for them. We have to also figure out the timing of when those additional trees can get planted because. the timing of when those additional trees can get planted because, let's say, six months after we get landscaping and the whole place is ready to go, and then Doug comes back and says, I want four more trees. And I have to, you know, get a big machine over your subject field and whatever. It could cause issues. So I think there's just some, some details like that have to get sorted out. That's really it.
Could we just have forty?
Sure, absolutely. Come on, you can have, you can actually even have sixty or ninety.
Thank you.
I think one echo was about that. And thank you for, you know, getting, you know, reducing some of the variances and.
Yeah, we did what we could. I mean, we really looked at it very clearly and said, like, how can we take, you know, every inch out of this we can and minimize.
Yeah, well, we, we, speaking of the effort, I do appreciate you listening to whatever sort of.
Yeah, I mean, after all, I said this before, I've done this all done. I still have to do the next story to Doug. So I don't want to create some dynamic now that's propelled it to, you know, to the whole.
Yeah, well, it sounds like there's a ninety percent there, ninety percent there. I guess that's fine.
Those drawings are beautiful.
The color.
I think we could put, like, like.
Yeah.
I, I don't think tonight's forum is the proper forum to hash out the, the last, like, remaining issues, issues on, on this. Where, I, I think in some, some substance, we're close, we're close to an agreement with, with minor differences. Again, in my, in my mind, that these, these little things that we saw, the little banter here, is all the more reason to get it reduced to writing so that we're all playing on the same field. We know the rules of the ballgame and someone doesn't throw a wild pitch at anybody. And that's, that's my take on this. And I'd rather resolve it here if you want to make a contingency where we can get this done. If he's got counsel, I'll, I'll make available the time so that this can get done and become part of, part of the record. And then it just goes to the planning board and we're finished. We don't, this doesn't fester.
Well, and I, and I understand what you're saying and I agree. And quite frankly, we would like to have this as part of our resolution, saying that, you know, the parties have agreed to whatever and reduce it to writing and have it as part of the resolution. I think that would be great. I just, and I, and I understand your frustration, although I'm going to turn to, and, you know, you can retain if things are busy. It's only a couple of days, so I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, quarrel with the, the new lawyer, not getting back in touch with you and, you know.
And I know that expectation would be a different thing. Again, I fully, I fully wanted to resolve this.
We've all been in that situation. So, anyway, but we won't, we, we, I just don't want to, to continue this on because, you know, we've, we've done the work. Everybody's made concessions here. We're, we're this close. And I think we can, I would like to close the public hearing. I want to hear from my counsel. I'd like to close the public hearing and, and.
I have a suggestion. Because I do think that Wayne makes a good point that, you know, a particular deal has been very good and very promising, and we're very happy with it. But it isn't really, I think that is quite enforceable. And, you know, especially, I think that there are good points that this buffering might resolve some of the factor and factor tests. My suggestion, because I think that, you know, probably a lot of this will be kind of resolved at the planning board level. But perhaps if we keep the public hearing open for like a two-week period, this way, it allows the memorandum of understanding to perhaps be executed, be included as part of the record. If it isn't included in that time, it allows Mr. Lagno and Wayne to provide their written comments.
Well, we can, we can do this, which is what, which you're suggesting. Keep it open, close it on the twenty-first, and read the resolution on the twenty-first.
Perhaps, I would say have a resolution.
Ready, have a resolution ready, assuming that in that interim, we've gotten the signed agreement and so we can incorporate.
And it also, in case there's, if I'm keeping, if you want to keep it open full thirty days to have the public hearing continued, et cetera, if, if the memorandum or anything isn't reduced to writing, it allows you guys to provide your comments to the board as well.
You don't, you don't lose any time here because if we close the public hearing tonight, we have sixty-two days to write the resolution. What we've done in the past in similar situations is, is there, we'll keep it open, but with the understanding that at the next meeting, we're going to close it. And we're going to close it, and that night will have a resolution. Okay? Because the next time we would have a resolution anyway would be the next meeting. So you're not, you're not losing anything by us keeping it open, closing it on the twenty-first, and then reading the resolution on the twenty-first.
Does that call the front, Chris, in the insurance office? Whatever the, the board decides, obviously, with, you know, public hearing standing in, everybody needs to work at this spot, obviously. In regards, I just want to put it on record, in regards to the concern about light and noise, I fail to see how eight to ten trees and eight to ten feet tall behind a barn would, without any lights on that side, would affect lighting. And then, the way that noise pressure travels, trees would not affect noise in any way behind a barn, right, that's taller than the trees themselves. So just something for the board to consider as a counterpoint to whether it even should be.
Sure. Do you take counsel?
Personally, I do think that both the applicant and the neighbor have, have gone very, very lengths to try to resolve this issue. I know the board is always appreciative of this. I do agree that if there could be something in writing, it would definitely be helpful for the board's consideration in adjusting, figuring out the, the whole balancing test just generally. The balancing test generally is the benefit to the applicant versus detriment to nearby property in the neighborhood. So, you know, maybe not lights and noise, but there's other considerations to consider too. And I think that if, if they are in fact close to coming up with a resolution that's amenable to both. And again, if, if that resolution does not reach, it does allow Mr. Lagno and Mr. Thompson the ability to provide comments. But I think that if, I think, Tim, you have this, you can probably, I think you have enough information, you can start drafting up a resolution. Continue the public hearing on December twenty-first. If no additional comments are provided, that would really change where the board is going. You know, you can always have a new resolution. But I think it just kind of, it kind of preserves some, some rights.
I agree. And, and I think it also keeps the beat to the fire. And so, you can get us, sooner you can get us an agreement so that it makes it easier for Tim to get the resolution in place for the twenty-first. I think that satisfies everybody. So everybody has a, I'd love to have this before Thanksgiving dinner.
But it, but it also, it doesn't impact the applicant because we wouldn't have a resolution ready until December anyway. So we're going to still try to keep to that schedule so that you're not delayed. And we'll just see what, you know, if, if the public hear, if you get the resolu, if the memorandum of understanding and writing and everyone agrees, then we'll probably have a very, very short public hearing. Just open it up, no additional comments, you know, according to what's left, any comments. Close it, and then you want a resolution.
And we can read the resolution, which we typically do.
And if, if writing can't be done, then, you know, Mr. Lagno and Mr. Thompson can provide any comments they want to. Board can consider it, determine if they'll move forward the resolution, or it probably will be closed anyway, no matter what, and then they just decide which way to go.
You guys are going to have this thing potted up.
Yeah, no, definitely. I think it just, like, it came on Monday.
No, 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 no. Listen, that's lightning speed, believe me. So, the good thing is we met.
Yeah.
Yes.
But like I said, compared to where it was last month, I think great strides have actually been, been made. And again, I appreciate both, both sides, you know, Mr. Lagno and Mr. Ruse. I thank you again just for coming together as neighbors. Like I said, we're not losing any time anyway. And then it just kind of just keeps, keeps the question.
I just, you know, there's been a few other times where it was something in the way of buffering or whatever that we've put in a resolution because it was very direct to the balancing factor. And I think in this case, it's obvious that you guys coming to an agreement is huge help all the way, you know. And so, we see that, we include that as part of our, of our consideration.
I guess I would just say that I don't think anybody's disputing that, that buffering is going to be part of the overall solution here. But if we're debating the, the very specifics of like what, you know, what exactly that looks like, and leaving the public hearing open for that purpose, you're going to still render a resolution before we go to the planning board. And I think what we're saying is that planning board might be part of that conversation. So it would make sense to be, to, to acknowledge that, that agreement is being made and to defer that solution to planning board in terms of.
We could certainly recommend, I mean, we can say, you know, we adopt this and we agree with this, that what the parties have agreed to. And we can make a recommendation to the planning board that they do the same. We can't tell them to do it. So.
Right. And I think that by having something in writing, it just shows that some agreement has been formalized. You know, I think that probably the planning board will be the ultimate decider on what is the appropriate landscape. But I think by having something in writing, it just kind of formalizes the, the loophole buffer. And then it just kind of goes towards that resolution, that balancing, that, you know, there's been a mitigation to one of the potential.
I guess what I'm questioning is like, if we're putting something in writing now between the two parties, that kind of.
It's a decision.
It's a decision, solidifies it before the planning board has an opportunity to weigh in on that. So what I would suggest.
We're making a decision for the planning board here at the ZBA.
Right.
Well, you can't do that. But why, like, why.
Certainly in terms of what you guys want. And this is, this is wonderful.
Yeah.
And I, I'm confident that the planning board is going to be over the moon to see something like this. And it will be more than happy to adopt because it happens so rarely.
But of course, the, whatever the resolution that's being discussed in the experience, it's not like, we're not asking it to, it to be the end-all, be-all. But like you said, just something that just kind of shows that there's something that's being worked on, that's being agreed upon. And, you know, probably in, in whatever is writing, you can just say this is subject to planning board approval. I mean, it certainly can be written in such a way that it's not, this is it or nothing.
Yes, sir. Do the meeting minutes, this meeting, comments, has, has that written up here?
I wouldn't think so.
But it's certainly, if they want to read the meeting minutes, they're going to see, all right, so this is what went on. And they can certainly see the validity, the discussion that went on, and be impressed by the fact that you folks have come to generate the agreement. I'd be worried, I'd be shocked if they didn't. But I mean, go on.
I mean, probably be a little horse dead horse. But I mean, if they come to an agreement that is specific enough to make the two of you happy, and it's in writing, the planning board's not going to say, oh, we don't, you can't plant those trees there.
Well, the planning, the planning board might.
They might say we want two orders.
Or, or they might, I think there, I think there had been one time when someone wanted to plant a certain type of tree and it was like an invasive species or it's, you know, like I think that they, they can, not so much, they could just make sure that whatever's going to be planted will be suitable, or like it's not going to die, or it's not, you know, going to lose all the, we, we went to another, maybe that's a spot. But I know that there have been some discussions with the planning board to, to improve it, to make it, you know, actually suitable to do additional mitigation.
I guess I was just trying to reiterate, reiterate, I think, all the way around is the, the primary thing is for the two of you to come to a agreement with enough specificity, they can put it in writing and we can all, you know.
We can adopt it, we can recommend it.
So, so last time we were here, the request was that Doug and I come to an agreement, which we've done. There was no specificity around it being written, which is now like this additional request, which combined with doing it, but I don't have it today.
No, no.
But you know.
I guess that's why.
And these are requests, these are just wonderful things that we never see. So if it's, if it's going to come to a written agreement, which it sounds like it is, just get it to us and incorporate it into the resolution.
Is there another, like, I guess, again, is there going to be another kind of requirement?
No, I don't, I would consider this to be a requirement. Okay? What, what I, what we're saying is that it's been discussed that there's work in progress to be written. And what we're just saying is that we're just keeping the public hearing open in case that can be provided. If it can't be provided, that's fine. But we're going to allow then Mr. Lagno and Mr. Thompson to then provide their comment because they're expecting to have a, a decision, a decision between the two of us about the visual impact. So that's all we're just, we're not requiring it as a condition. We're just saying if it can be produced, that would be great.
So if there's, there's no requirement around it being written.
Correct.
But we have an agreement that we shook hands and.
I require is a written agreement. It affects property.
Well, it was, it was speaking.
So if, if this board doesn't require a written agreement?
We do not require a written agreement. In fact, I don't know that we've ever seen one. But it's lovely to have. And so that's why we're kind of leaving this open. So hopefully that'll happen, which I'm sure will.
So my, my question to the board is, let's say I don't want to do a written agreement. I'm understanding what Doug, and I'll do what I said, I'll send by my word. Would we still keep this open? Or would you guys make a decision to do it all for that? And would it change our decision?
I, I, I think we can, first of all, I hope there's a written agreement. But if there isn't, I think we can continue forward on the twenty-first anyway. We have.
I think, my, my anticipation would be that if there's not a written agreement provided, then on December twenty-first, we would continue a public hearing, which is what is where the board is leaning towards. If Mr. Lagno wants to provide public comments at that meeting, he can do so. And then, if there's no new information that we need, and again, we're not requiring, we just think it would be very hopeful to both the parties involved and to the board in making their decision. But we would likely close the public hearing at December twenty-first unless something really punch-shattering new information comes in that the board have to consider. And then, you know, we'll go.
We'll have a draft.
We'll have a draft resolution. It can be discussed.
Well, would we be able to have a draft resolution?
I think so. I, I, listen, I, I think we have ninety-five percent of the information. It's just getting the last little piece. If it comes, it comes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. So I think we can certainly have a resolution.
I do think that if there's a written resolution, it would likely be helpful to the board in considering the balancing, just because it just kind of solidifies what is being discussed. And it will be finalized at the planning board level, but it just kind of goes towards showing that there will be mitigation that is being considered. But, you know, again, it's a full-on balancing test, more factors that you will be considering. And, you know, at the close of the public hearing, you are allowed sixty-two days to issue a decision. If you, well, if you feel you can have a resolution prepared, if after you have a public comment received on the twenty-first, you decide, you know what, I'm not, I might need to adjust the, you can do so. Leave it open.
But I, I, I think we should strike every resolution ready, especially given the fact how these forums are working together. And this is one of it. I mean, as it, as it needed to. But I think we should, we've done it in the past, rarely, you know, having a resolution available at the full of the public hearing.
I just have a question. So, and to the point about like invasive species or, if, if two parties come to an agreement and they put it in writing, and it is, there's some sort of circumstance that was unforeseen, the planning board disagrees with, and that's tied now to your decision on the variance. Doesn't that create like a messy situation? Like if we could, like, we're there, like, we're talking, there's going to be a number of trees, they're going to be a particular kind.
If they wanted to substitute out the trees and all that kind of stuff, that, that's fine. I mean, we have a very narrow issue. That's one. That's one of the components, the buffering. So if they saw fit to make some changes because there was an invasive species, I don't think that affects our resolution at all, but...
And again, you know, whatever is being discussed amongst the attorneys, you know, these, this written agreement can be written up in whatever specificity you want, but what I'm just suggesting is that it sounds like something is in the works. I think it would be helpful to the board in their consideration, which is why we're just allowing potential time for that to happen. If it doesn't happen, it's not a condition to move forward. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's where my question was, Mr. Ruse. Did it seem like prior to discussion on the written, we would be able to have a resolution today?
No, that wasn't the, that wasn't...
Yes, we just made a board.
Yeah, so from the last meeting, so we're typically, what happens is that, you know, we have a public hearing and at the October meeting, the public hearing was continued until tonight. So there was no resolution that was prepared tonight because we wanted to hear comments, you know, that may not have been made at the last meeting. So what we're proposing now is that if we continue the public hearing to December, we'll have a resolution likely drafted for the December 21st meeting. If the public hearing ends up being closed, which is likely what's, I think, anticipated, then we'll have a resolution prepared to be discussed by the board at the December 21st meeting. So whether the public hearing was closed tonight or it's closed on December 21st, the resolution wouldn't have been prepared until December 21st either way.
But the public hearing would be closed as it did.
That would be a case.
I just also wanted to add in, and maybe it's kind of a point of discussion amongst the board members here, given this particular situation in the balancing test, a evergreen buffer there would be important for me. So...
That's how we ever written.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that's why I think we...
Yeah, even if you don't have an agreement, we can...
...draft a resolution because if we kind of feel a visual buffer there is an important part of the consideration, then that could be part of our resolution.
Right, we can make it a condition, even if you guys don't have an agreement and then the planning board will finalize it, so to speak.
We don't necessarily have to count the trees.
No.
Right.
Right. The planning board counts the trees.
Right. I find it a little discouraging, disappointing that being neighbors, and I know some people want to, you did it on a handshake, that's the old-fashioned way of doing it. I guess, I know it's more protection than everything with this signed agreement, but how far do you go with it? Does it have to be notarized, by the way? I mean, it does. See, well, if that's what they're asking for, then that's...
I think it's just discouraging as neighbors when it has to go that way. I don't know about that. As a designer, it tells people in the future what's going on. You just don't like lawyers, that's all.
Yeah.
Yes, Doug.
So, you know, I appreciate everything going on here. Buffer is super important because I don't want to see this mastrosity from my house and the lights, even though I'm on an angle, I possibly could see the lights. Let's throw that in there. So I want to thank, we did have a handshake agreement and also in that agreement, you said we were putting it in writing. So I don't understand why we're not putting it in writing. That was the agreement, that was the agreement while we had the handshake. Handshake and in writing. Good, that's that. I want to thank everybody so much for all your time and thank you for coming to my house, taking your valuable time on a Saturday. It's wonderful of you to come to my house. I really appreciate it. And I want to discuss a thanks to Gretchen, she was so helpful on the phone, she showed me up so much. I really appreciate it. She's a wonderful asset. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Well, you're going to have to do it one more time. I got to go, I'm going to do the resolution. I'll be off.
If you come to a property, how would you contact me?
You all too. Do you want to contact you more or? I can't even remember you. Okay, great. We'll be on a Saturday.
Sure, anytime. Thank you.
Okay. I'm afraid to ask if there's any more questions, concerns.
Well, I guess the question is, are you keeping the public hearing?
Well, I'm just about, I was going to let people say hopefully nothing more and then I was going to make a motion. Anything else? All right, so I'm going to, based upon all of the discussions here, I'm going to make a motion that we continue the public hearing and that that will be on the December 21st. And I think the understanding amongst us is that hopefully we will close the public hearing on the 21st, we will have a resolution ready, the parties will before that and hopefully will before then to help Tim out, have a written agreement to forward to us to help us so we can incorporate that in the resolution. All right, so the motion is that we continue the public hearing until the 21st and...
One second.
Okay.
Under those assumptions.
Under those assumptions.
Okay. Agree?
Agree, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extentions? Good. We'll see you on the 21st and we're going to wrap this thing up.
So Tim, what would you be doing? Are you going to come to?
And we have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so all in favor?
Six, two, four.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? All right. Steve, we're done.